Today, February 7th at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held, is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall and it is being televised. Ms. Hames, can you please call the roll call?
Ms. Leonard here, Mr. Luteri.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Martucci.
Yep.
Ms. Petry here.
Ms. Swob.
Here.
Ms. Barry.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Present.
Ms. Leonard, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight? Hearing none. We have no delegates or visitors. Can I have the motion on the minutes of January 24th?
Motion.
Second. Um, motion by Mr. Luteri, second by Ms. Barry. Ms. Hames, can you call the roll?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Um, can I have a motion for warrant, SVW 22-13, in the amount of $251,450.45.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci?
Second.
Second by Ms. Luteri. Can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Can I have a motion for payroll warrant, SPW 22-16, in the amount of $826,434.99?
Motion?
Second.
Um, motion by Ms. Leonard, second by Ms. Swob. Can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Upstaying.
Mr. Martucci?
Staying.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have no buildings and grounds tonight. Uh, subcommittee report from the policy?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, the policy, um, subcommittee met on Thursday, February 3rd at 4:00 PM. Uh, the meeting was arranged to discuss the possibility of opening future school committee meetings to Zoom. Um, we had had this capability during the pandemic when it was unsafe to meet in person and, um, that since has been discontinued. Um, and so there were some emails and correspondences from, uh, some constituents that were interested in seeing Zoom brought back. Um, we decided at the end of the year to wait till the new school committee was in place to have these discussions. Um, and so the purpose of the meeting, uh, we stated the purpose of the meeting and we read into statement a couple of, um, notes from our fellow school committee member. It was agreed that members of the school committee, one of the things that we did agree to is that members of the school committee would be able to participate in meetings via Zoom should they be forced to miss, um, an in-person meeting due to extenuating circumstances such as illness or work travel. Um, and then we talked about the ways that constituents can currently be involved in school committee meetings. Um, currently there's live streaming from WCAT and, um, constituents can attend meetings in person. In addition, there's opportunity to send in public comment via email correspondence ahead of meetings. Um, and again, uh, folks are also able to be present in person to provide public comment. Um, there's some concern that the current timing of meetings makes it difficult for folks to be able to be present in person and that engaging via Zoom meetings would be more convenient and create a more convenient opportunity for engagement. Um, so one of the things we talked about were some of the challenges that we faced when we did have Zoom meetings before, um, and areas to streamline should we choose this direction. We also discussed opportunities to better educate the community on ways to get involved should we keep the meetings as is. Um, in addition, we, uh, recognize the need, should we move to having Zoom meetings, that we'd need to have an additional attendee present and potentially pay that person to run the technology. So we were going to look into some, uh, next steps. We did not make a vote or a decision because we did identify some next steps here. Um, we wanted to solicit feedback from other town council members and school committee members. Uh, we also wanted to identify the cost in securing an additional attendee to the meeting to run the technology. Um, and we were going to research the type of Zoom, uh, subscription we have now to see if closed captioning and accessibility was an option for our existing, um, Zoom platform. So, that's where we're at. I don't know if either Susie Young Swob or Ms. Leonard have anything they want to add to that.
That's good. Okay, are there any questions from the committee? Okay, moving on, um, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Um, mine's not relatively long tonight after we just had a budget subcommittee.
I'm sorry, we also had a budget subcommittee and I forgot to ask about the budget subcommittee.
We had a budget subcommittee meeting at 5:00 this evening. Um, we just discussed, uh, in the preliminary stages of the budget for, uh, FY '23. Lisa's got another couple of weeks with her staff to go over some stuff and, uh, she's got a good handle on it. They have a real good start. And, um, I think we should have some, uh, numbers in a couple of weeks.
All right, very good. Any questions from the committee? Okay, hearing on now, superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll start with, um, Frozen. I've been frozen all day long today. Um, however, I had the opportunity to go and see our middle school production of Frozen, um, on Sunday. And it was, I was blown away. I was blown away because it was a middle school production and, you know, I've been blown away by the high school productions and the middle school productions that we've had in the past. Uh, but two years of not having productions, um, and several months of watching, uh, our students and staff work on this production. Um, I get to see snippets of it because I get to go in and, and see the kids practicing. Uh, but never until it's fully done do you get the breadth of the talent that we have in this school district. It's ridiculous. Um, I think having the kids performing in the school onstage, albeit with masks on, we could still hear them because we have, uh, great technology. So that was helpful. Um, it was something that was sold out, a production that was sold out three nights in a row or three days and nights in a row. Um, every student who participated, from the back students who do the, uh, what do you call it?
Crew.
The crew, uh, that, that does the, the lighting, the setting up of the, um, and the design of all, everything that's on that stage as well as where students need to be standing. Everybody had a part, right up to Elsa and, uh, who is one of our, our, uh, committee members, uh, young daughters. It was amazing. And, and if anyone in this room has never heard the song "Let It Go," then I don't know where you've been, maybe under a rock because I've heard it for the last five years. Um, I didn't expect it to sound like it sounded from a middle school, uh, student. So, I think I was more taken back by how smooth it was and how every student really did have a part. And at the end, when the cast and the crew all came out, um, and every student and staff member who took part in it, um, I think they were excited and sad all at the same time because it's been months of putting this production, um, together. Seeing all the little kids come in dressed in their Frozen costumes, all the little ones with the little baby Elses coming in and, um, it was just, it was, it was funny. It was, um, beautiful all at the same time. Um, so I really, I really enjoyed it. I didn't want to go home afterwards. I wanted to meet everybody afterwards. So, I did get the opportunity to go back, uh, on stage, uh, and talk to the kids after the play. Uh, but I had an opportunity to talk to them before the play too because they were just getting ready before all the people came in. I don't know how they weren't super nervous and stumbling all over themselves, uh, but they weren't. When they came out, they looked like a, a full professional production. Um, and the feedback from the community has been great. So it's amazing to have our kids back doing those things, back on stage. Um, and if that's any indication of, of what the future is from when they're high school, it's extremely exciting. Um, so that's the first part of my, of my story here tonight. A couple of updates. Our staff received, um, the at-home testing kits. As you know from my multiple emails and conversations, uh, rapid testing, uh, and, I'm sorry, uh, test and stay and contact tracing are no longer, uh, a function of the school district. But twice a month, all staff members who have opted in and all families who have opted in will receive test kits, um, either sent home to them if you're a student, the students will take them home. Um, and that first distribution is this Tuesday for students tomorrow. Uh, if you have opted in, your child will be coming home with a test kit, which we encourage you to use if, if you would like to on Tuesdays. Uh, the goal is getting more test kits in the hands of people as opposed to waiting for kids to come to school and, and be symptomatic or, uh, have an episode of, of being in contact with other people. So those test kits go home Tuesday to the kids. Our staff received them last week. Uh, this portal is still open, so if you haven't opted in, on each school's homepage, a parent can go on and, and ask for them. If you've already asked for them once, you don't have to ask for them again. If you haven't asked for them yet, you still have an opportunity. So, jump on the website. There's a tab on there for you to go on and click. It's a fairly, uh, easy process. We're also encouraging pa- uh, parents, if, if they can, to continue to upload their, uh, student's vaccination status. Uh, right now, we're at about 33% of the students across the whole district have uploaded, um, their vaccinations. It's not mandatory. Um, however, it is helpful to us to know who is vaccinated and, um, who may still be waiting. Uh, our staff, uh, is at a higher rate, um, just across the entire staff. About 82% of our staff have uploaded their vaccination status. And when we say staff, that's anyone who works in any one of the school buildings as an employee for the school district. Um, vaccination, uh, COVID update. So, I, last we met, I'm going to give you information from the last meeting that we had. So between the week of January 20th to the 26th, we reported to the Department of Education 26 staff members who had tested positive and reported to us for COVID and four students, which is a dramatic difference in terms of students than the past. And the latest update, which was last week's submission, between the dates of January 27th and February 2nd, 14 staff members, uh, had, uh, reported COVID positive status and only two students. So, we're seeing, uh, a much more happy COVID number than we've seen in the past, indicating, uh, the trend going down pretty dramatically. Budget update, uh, we're working on the budget. We had a budget subcommittee meeting tonight. We've been working on the budget since October. That's typically when we start, uh, the beginning process of reviewing, uh, current staff and, and looking at what projection for the next year may be. We also sent out a parent and a staff survey, asking for input, uh, into what parents and, uh, staff felt as though they would like to see in the budget, what important areas, uh, you know, did, what areas of importance, uh, they really wanted to see reflected. Um, from everything from transportation to student engagement to after-school activities, uh, to curriculum, um, the rigor of curriculum, uh, and, and such. So, we've gathered all that data. Principals are meeting with me tomorrow. They received the data last week, start to review it by building. And then tomorrow at our administration meeting, uh, we'll be looking at that data and doing some compare and contrast, uh, work and just looking to see how many, uh, folks and at what levels share, uh, the same thoughts. And so that will be incorporated into our additional budget planning, which is going to take us throughout the next month and a half to two months in terms of how we allocate our funds. Um, and it, there was also another parent survey that was done during curriculum and open house nights back about two months ago, where parents were able to, um, go up to, we had, uh, trifold boards and looking at how we were going to spend S.R. III money, which is the third round of COVID money coming in from the state, which spans a three-year period, this year, next year, and the following year. We asked parents to indicate for us where they felt that that money, uh, could be of best use. Uh, primarily, one-time money should be used for one-time things, um, but there are circumstances, especially, um, you know, depending upon the time you're in, in your school department, where other things like after-school support, before-school support, um, and other, uh, types of activities, um, may be a, a good use of that money. So, all of that information is also being, um, was dissected in terms of how we write the S.R. III grant. We've not received our, um, approval of that grant yet and the reason behind that is, uh, Winthrop along with about 18 other communities had some, um, pretty specific one-time purchases or one-time activities that they wanted to use some of that funding for, um, around capital improvement. And the capital improvements, um, in the school buildings would be reflective of continuing to keep the good air quality that we have, making sure we don't have any, if we have leaks in our building, that we don't have any, uh, opportunity for mold to grow, uh, or bacteria to grow. And so, the Department of Education has taken those 18 communities who have capital, uh, requests, which were very appropriate for the grant, and they're being vetted by, um, I, I believe it's the legal department, um, to approve those grants, just to make sure that the spending is appropriate. We expected to hear back from them by last week. We were told that next week may be our, may be our date. Um, and as soon as that, uh, is approved, that grant and the, um, areas of spending will be posted on the website so that families who provided that input, uh, could see exactly where that money is going to be going to over the next several years. So we hope to have that by next week. Uh, E-Rate, which is something I knew nothing about five years ago, and I'm now sort of an E-Rate genius. E-Rate is reimbursement that comes from the state for certain categories of purchases that we make. So it's a discount, um, in terms of technology. So, the technology, um, some of the bigger technology ticket items are Comcast and our cost for Comcast for the bandwidth or the internet service that's provided to the district. And then other, uh, infrastructure repairs, um, that you want to do in your school district. So, Balsam Technology, who is our new technology lead, uh, that came on July 1st of this year, has done a, a technology, uh, forecast for us and sort of a capital planning, uh, forecast for the school district in which they came out and looked at everything. We have not, not just computers and, and smart boards, but more the infrastructure. What do our server rooms look like? What's the lifespan of the servers that we have? How are the switches in our buildings? Uh, are they appropriate? Do they need to be upgraded? Um, the importance of that is that many of those things that we may need to improve or to replace because they've met their, their lifespan, uh, many of those items are eligible for reimbursement through E-Rate. Um, and the, the trick is that you have to, uh, let them know what it is that you need before you go out and get it. And then you submit to, once, once you post that and it's, uh, it's bid on, you then pick who it is that's going to do that work. And if you're buying 48 Aruba switches at, you know, a rate of $250 a piece, your average rate of reimbursement on those is 60%. Uh, so it's something that, it, it takes a tremendous amount of time to, to learn, uh, but the, the throwback on it is big. 60% reimbursement on some of these things, um, is very helpful. And so, uh, depending upon who installs them, there's installation reimbursement as well. So, if we were to use Balsam to do the installation of some of the work we need, um, which includes some bandwidth expansion at the middle school, high school, um, they are also E-Rate reimbursable at 60%. So, that money will get directly put back into how we bought them or who did the work. Um, so both of those, category one and category two have been posted. Uh, they are due to be, uh, bid on by the end of next week. We have a couple of different companies coming out to tour our server rooms, um, which ought to be interesting. Uh, they're coming out on the 10th to do that. So you have to open up that process and actually bring people around and let them see your server rooms and let them look at what you have so they can determine if they want to actually, uh, take the opportunity to, to do that work in our schools. The cost, uh, a, a lot of the cost of doing some of those larger projects is projected into the one-time funding of S.R. III. Um, and, and likely will take us five to seven years, uh, of improvement. So they'll, they'll last for five to seven years. We have a couple of servers that are, uh, about a year or a year and a half overdue. We've been lucky. Um, but we want to make sure that those are up to speed. Uh, the last thing I want is a DDoS attack or a server to go down. So, that work is underway. And on February 28th, we're anticipating, um, a decision by the Department of Education. If you remember, um, the department extended the mandatory mask-wearing mandate. So, as many of you have heard me say multiple times, we have consistently followed the Department of Education's recommendations in all, everything COVID from that dating, um, to March of 2020. The mask-wearing, um, mandate is not a recommendation, it's a mandate. So, recommendations, we have chosen to follow. Mandates, you are mandated to follow. Uh, we're expecting them to make a decision because they extended it through February 28th or till February 28th. It's typically the week before they decide to make a change that they tell us at the 11th hour that they're going to make a change. Uh, we should have some more information by next week as to what the department is thinking. Um, however, that's not written in stone. So what they're thinking and what they end up doing are, are usually two different things. Um, and so I will keep the committee up to date, uh, on what it is that we believe that they're going to do so that if we have to have any type of a special school committee put together, meeting put together, um, to discuss that, that we'll be able to do that in a timely fashion. Um, when they say they extended it to the 28th, I'm, I'm used to getting information about what they're going to do with that extended date, not weeks in advance. It's usually the week before they say, "We're going to have a Zoom meeting and we're going to let you know." And then five minutes later, the governor comes out and, and makes his announcement. Um, so I will keep the committee up to date, uh, on what I hear, if anything is coming prior to that. But I would assume they'll be giving us some information, uh, a few days, I would hope, in advance to allow us to come together.
Um, yes, Ms. Swob?
Thanks. Uh, I just had one comment because you, you, you did talk about uploading the vaccination status and I think that's so important. And I, I hope anybody who's listening understands that, first of all, it would help because parents that are, or students that are concerned about getting COVID would like to know if it's, particularly if it's good news because I, from what you've said in the past, it's just that a lot of students have not uploaded the data. So, if we have good news, that would be great. And secondly, we don't know what the governor is going to do, but if he decides to do something like, if you're vaccinated and you don't have to wear a mask and we're at 70 or 80%, that would be terrific. So, I'm hoping that everyone takes heed for what you've said.
Uh, you know, initially, we asked for parents to upload, um, the vaccination status because of a, a couple of factors. One was because we were aware of the 80% and we wanted to make sure that we had that information and that the school committee could decide to shift as, as, as necessary and quickly. Uh, because those vaccinations, when they get uploaded through the portal that we have, that, it's nice that they get uploaded, but we have a, a registered nurse that just quickly reviews it to make sure that it's the correct cards, correct name. And then we have a, a very, uh, specific by name and grade, um, listing of students that's held with the school nurse in the moment. No one else has access to that, um, or has had to view that because there's no reason to view it. Um, when the Department of Education came out with the 80% status, it's important to note, it, it wasn't 80% of children in one building. It's 80% of all children and all staff, employees in that building. So if you think about the Coming School, 80% of the staff and the students in that building, custodial staff, cafeteria staff, 80% of the whole had to, you had to have that 80% of the whole to ask the depart- to, to inform the department that you were at 80% and, and request that they, uh, approve you, allowing, uh, those folks to, to choose to wear masks or not wear masks. Um, at, like I said, at the present time, overall, we have about 32 to 33%, I didn't check it today, of our students that have uploaded. If in fact this department on the 28th says, all students, you know, it's optional, as long as they say it's optional and they leave out, "If you have a vaccination," we'll be fine. If they say it's optional for those who are vaccinated, we're going to be chasing ourselves real fast to try to gather all that information. So, i- and that's a lot of work. And, and we've discussed this at the, the principal level, uh, along with the school nurses. And there's some, there's some concern about that. And this has been information that's been given back to the Department of Education as well. If they put a caveat on that, that you have to prove your vaccination status, the impact of that, and I think squarely about children, less about adults and more about kids, kids don't upload their own vaccination status. That's the parent's job. And if a parent doesn't upload a child's status, and we're going to go in a different direction on Monday, the one who's hurt is the child because we then have to sort of manage that. I don't know how we'd manage that. You know, you have a classroom full of 25 kids. We'd, we'd have to have a list of the kids who are vaccinated and those who are not. And that is a very big concern for the school district in terms of enforcing that. Because you would have to s- you know, would you have to? It would be probably what they'd be asking us to do, not allow children who aren't vaccinated to not wear masks. That is going to be a very difficult, uh, task for teachers and administrators to want to engage in. Because you have to then speak to children about not being vaccinated and that's really way outside our purview.
From a clarity standpoint, the schools that they have one waiver, not one, but who have been granted a waiver, do they, are there any restrictions on if a child's not vaccinated, they are still required to wear masks or is it just free choice across?
Yes, so, yeah, so it's only current, the way it works now is if you are at 80%, anyone who's vaccinated, and you have to have data to support that and, and whether you have to submit it to the Department of Education or not, they, you have to be able to prove that you have 80%. The other 20% have to wear a mask. How they're managing that in other schools, I, I haven't checked because we haven't been remotely close to it, nor is it a game that I want to engage in with children. Because if you think about how children, you, you're in a classroom with your teachers, this is my personal opinion as a superintendent of schools, I find it hard to, to want to say, "Okay, well, you have to tell kids, you're not, you're not vaccinated, you have to wear a mask." I worry about mashing. I worry about kids feeling like, "Oh, my God, like, I don't have my vaccination." And, and the anxiety and, and stress that that will cause on children, um, is very, very concerning. And I'm speaking only about Winthrop Public Schools, to our staff. Our staff does not want to get into those conversations, nor should we be getting into those conversations with children. Um, so my hope is that, that it doesn't come out that way. You know, i- if it does, there's going to have to be some heavy discussion because there's going to be a lot of staff that are not going to want to address children and we're going to have to make some decisions around that. I don't feel it's appropriate to address children about their vaccination status. We don't do it now. If a student doesn't have the required vaccinations to come to school, we address that with the parents, but that's few and far between. This is a whole different world when it comes to the total number of vaccinations that we, statuses that we have at 33%. You, you know, I don't know if you can see that picture. It's a little bit unnerving. It's unnerving for the, for the administration as well as the teaching staff that I have had conversation with about it. It's concerning.
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Uh, could I just maybe make a suggestion? Um, uh, I think possibly, again, I speak here now as a parent and not just a school committee member, uh, a gentle reminder, maybe, and, and in the next week, it's going out across the school district, I think, would do a lot of good. Um, I, I suspect there are folks, um, I suspect there are folks who just forgot, um, to upload their status.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point. And we have, we've, we've been, we have sent out a number of them and we certainly can, can do it again. And certainly we have been cognizant of parents who are kind of sick of hearing from us, saying, "Yes, we know, but I, as a parent, have chosen not to give it to you, so stop asking me for it." You know, we got, I, I got some of that feedback. Um, I think a, a one-time reminder now wouldn't be a bad idea as long as parents understand, "If you've already sent it and we'll write it that way, this is not mandatory. It's not mandatory that you submit this." However, we, I have no idea what the Department of Education is going to do. Um, I'm hopeful that it, it will not be that.
I think there's probably a way to ward it, like, as we await, you know, the next kind of set of recommendations, you know, to help with our planning, you know, something very gentle.
Sure.
Do you, um, do you know, w- if we were to achieve the 80%, how long it's been taking the state to grant waivers?
I don't think it takes lo- I, I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think it would take long at all. I think it's a matter of you, you contact them and you, you let them know. They're very responsive. You let them know that you're at 80% and I think typically they pick up the phone and call you and say, "What have you, what data have you, you know, do you have in your coffers to prove that?" And you tell them. Uh, I know they don't take copies of anything, so they don't ask you to upload your status. It's, it's based on the superintendent's signature that they reviewed the status and that's where you are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Um, do we have homeschool applications?
We do not.
And do we have appointments or resignations?
Yep, so we have no appointments and no resignations, but we do have two retirements that I would like to, uh, if you may, just quickly read. One is from Mr. Michael Kirby. "I've had the good fortune to be able to teach and coach in Winthrop, my hometown, for close to 35 years. As a fellow Winthrop native, I know you understand what a special place Winthrop is and I appreciate the opportunity to work in such a wonderful community. Over this time, I've met and worked with, with great students..." Over this time, I've met and worked with, with great students and wonderful families. I have many fond memories to enjoy as I start this next chapter in my life. I have been lucky to have a great teaching partner in Bernadette Carsley, and we have enjoyed creating the Lions team. We appreciate and sup- and the support provided by your office and the school committee as well as that of Brian Curley, our administrative team at the middle school, Matt Ser- and Matt Serino, our athletic director. The professionalism and hard work of our administrators and fellow teachers has made the difference over the years, and it is with sincere gratitude that I thank you. And a heartfelt thank you to all the students and parents I have met and worked with over the years. Thank you for making Winthrop a great town. Please accept this letter as my notice and my intention to retire, and I would also like to request the buyback of my sick days. Thank you, Michael Kirby." And then I'll read the second one, and you can take them as, as one vote. Dear Mrs. Howard, after thirty-six years of an, as an educator, it's time for retirement. It is my intent to retire from my position as a mathematics teacher at Winthrop High School at the end of the school year. During this time, it has been my pleasure to teach the children of Winthrop not only once, but twice during my career as an educator. I am grateful for the camaraderie, support, guidance, and dedication provided to me and the faculty as well as the many superintendents, principals, and school committee members that I served under. It will forever be a part of me as I move on to this next phase in my life. I wish the community and students of Winthrop all the best in the years to come. And I am also requesting, uh, that I would like to buy back my, uh, eligible sick time. And that is from Ms. Raina Arrington. Both amazing teachers. Um, you know, when you say a loss, I don't really look at it as a loss. I look at it as a gain that we've had uh, from both of these in- individuals. We're combined over seventy years, you know, worth of, of teaching to our children and the community. Um, and although I will, uh, miss them, I wish them the best in their next step in life.
Um, can I have a motion for the, the, um, buyback of the sick days?
Let's do approve.
Um, motion by Ms. Martucci, seconded by Ms. Wilt. Uh, Ms. Haynes, can you call the roll?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
And for postings, uh, we have a posting for an ESP position at the William P. Gorman Fort Bank School. And we also have a posting for a long-term substitute, uh, in the field of chemistry, uh, as a chemistry teacher at the high school. So both of those postings are, uh, are up, and we have no leaves of absence to report at this time.
Okay, we have no new business. We have, um, unfinished business of the superintendent's goals.
Looking for two more weeks, so, um, we're not done yet. We had a couple of, um, members that wanted to see some changes. So we're looking for the next meeting, and then we'll have those.
Okay.
In the meantime, just remember that Lisa is working on the goals, the draft goals, so we're, we're good there. But, um, just two more weeks, and then we'll have the goals, we'll have the vote on it.
Okay, very good. And that brings us to public relations. Mr. Martucci?
Good, thank you.
Ms. Lane?
Good. Not tonight, thanks. Oh, actually, yes, tonight, sorry. Well, we are, uh, we've moved on from the middle school production of Frozen, and we are on to Dinner Theater, which will be taking place Tuesday and Wednesday, um, at the Neil Shapiro Center for the Performing Arts at seven o'clock. Um, you can buy tickets at the door, fifteen dollars each, uh, except cash and Venmo.
Fantastic. Nothing for me. Mr. Littary?
Nothing, thank you.
So, okay, we-
You're going to read the ones on the bottom?
Yes, we have a-
March, March twenty-fifth is the Polar Plunge, just to throw it out there.
All right, Polar Plunge is, I'm sorry, which date?
March twenty-fifth.
Polar Plunge, March twenty-fifth. Support the Winthrop High School Student Council. You can, um, the students will be participating, and you can make a donation through, we have a link on our Facebook page. There's also a winter clothes drive. Is, is that at the middle school?
Uh, high school.
High school. It's also at the high school. That is for new and gently-used warm winter clothes.
What's the date on it?
Um, that runs from two, uh, through February eighteenth. Um, congratulations to Peter Ju-
Jurovich.
Jurovich for his selection to the Massachusetts High School Football Coaches Association Division Six All-State Team. Um, and also, the Winthrop Police Department would like to recognize three Winthrop Elementary School students, Lexi Pelton, Alana Arpino, and Sophia Schultz. These students noticed something that was not right with the house and called nine-one-one, and their quick thinking and action promptly, um, and a prompt response from the W P D and W F D allowed a water main break to be contained. So kudos to our kids for speaking out, stepping out. And that is all I have. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Martucci, seconded by Mr. Littary. Ms. Haynes, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yep.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned.